I'd like to call the January. Good morning, I'd like to call it January ninth. Twenty twenty four council meeting order, it's nine thirty AM. Wanted to jump in to make sure we records it is nine thirty and not to nine thirty one. First item of business is approval of the agenda. In terms of items that need to be discussed, starting with item two point one. Item three point one. Item four point one. Item six point one, six point two, six point three. I'd like to add seven point three. Eight point one. Eight point two. And all of section eleven, that's eleven point one, two, three, four, five and six. CIO, do you have any?
Mr. Reeves, we'd like to remove. Eleven two. That's advice from officials land, we'll just bring it ahead to a future meeting. It's it's not time sensitive.
We'll delete eleven point two, the other one I'd like to add, there's. Request for a letter of support regarding the C E I P. And that would be number ten point, sorry, nine point one, and that came in after the. Council deadline and needs to reply before the next meeting, so it's C E I P letter of support. Other additions. Other additions are.
Thank you, five point one. Please, and did you mention seven point two?
No.
Okay, seven point two, please. You mentioned seven point three, seven point four, please.
Councilmen.
Sure, I'll go. Seven point threes on there, I'll do. Seven five, seven point five.
There is. Okay, there's a clear recommended, so just if you're doing it just because we often talk about delegations, there's a clear recommendation to bring it back to the next meeting.
Yeah, I just wanted to talk about that.
Yeah, seven five.
And then eight point one A.
Eight point one A, sorry, if I didn't add that, I meant to add that.
Okay. Perfect. And I think that's it, and I will approve the agenda.
Okay, other items to add or delete? Seeing none, we'll go through them again, CIO.
Sorry, Ms. Chair, Ms. Player would just like to clarify one item that you moved.
Did you want to speak on item three point one or three point three?
Three point three.
Okay.
So going through the list, I have two point one. Three point three. Four point one. Five point one. That's. All of item six at six point one, six point two, six point three, item seven point two, seven point three, seven point four, seven point five. Eight point one A, eight point two, nine point one. Item eleven one, eleven three, eleven four, eleven five, eleven six, we're deleting. Eleven point two, we are adding nine point one, which is the C E I P letter of support. And I would like to also propose to you that we. Move item eight point two calendars to happen immediately before item six. And just to organ. Because that may impact the decision in six, Counselor Holland.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure eight point one V was there just for a quick question.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
That's only a. Any further additions, deletions, amendments? Seeing none, Counselor Mins has moved the adoption of the agenda as amended, all those in favor?
I.
The motion is nine and zero, and the motion is adopted. First item of. Next item of business is item three point three. I put that on because I think there's a couple of corrections that need to occur in there. If you look at page twelve of your agenda. The clarifications. That I think need to. Occur. As it relates to resolution. Two, three, six, eight, six and six, eight, seven, we just need to note that that was one amendment and the question was split. And then following six, eight, seven, we need to record that Counselor Kapitanic moved third reading of the bylaw. And. That it was. Ultimately, instead of same motion carried, it would say suspended by referral because that motion was on the table and remains on the table. That's page twelve of your agenda. And then. I I think this may require us to just defer approving these minutes to the next meeting where we can ask administration to double check the recording, but. When I look at items twenty three, six, eight, nine, six, ninety and six, nine, one, I think. Six, eight, nine should actually be numbered six, nine, one. My memory of the discussion, but also the logic of we had a a motion to approve first reading. We had debate, we had an amendment on that, we had further debate. And then we voted on both the amendment and the motion. And then following that, there was a motion to refer it off to legal counsel as well. Because if we'd moved to refer it to legal counsel first, we wouldn't have done the second two things. Yeah, it's just out of order. Is there anybody that that doesn't make sense to? I I think the the answer is really to have it been just double check, and so we'll. It'd be reasonable to take a motion to refer this to the next council meeting for approval. Counselor Holland, so moves. Any further discussion? Seeing none. On the motion to refer the minutes to the next council meeting for approval, all those in favor?
I.
The motion is adopted and the count is nine and zero. Our delegation is not here. Five point one, Counselor Holland, you asked that to be on the agenda. Do you have a motion you'd like to make?
I'll get to the page. I really need to get back on the printouts. There we go, I would like to make a motion to accept report as information and further to direct administration. To draft a letter to Aspen View School Division in support of the Rochester School remaining open, similar to.
Slow down.
Pardon?
Just slow down.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Secretary.
Sure, to accept the report as information and further to direct administration. To draft a letter to Aspen View School Division in support of Rochester School remaining open, similar to the letter that was done for the Grassland School.
So Counselor Holland has moved that council received this reporting from as information. And further to direct. Information. To draft a letter. Sorry, to 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 direct administration to draft a letter to Aspen View Public Schools in support of the school. In Rochester remaining open, and to see using the letter of the tenth of March twenty twenty regarding Grassland as a model. Is that fair? Do you want to speak to it?
I can wait till the end if you like.
Well, you could both, you can speak to introduce it, you can have a concluding remark.
Well, in my personal opinion, I think it is extremely important that. County and council support our schools and our hamlets and having those schools within, and. I think it is extremely important that Rochester School remain open.
Other discussion? Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Just for clarity, I believe the letter that's included in our agenda package on page twenty nine is quite focused on. The library within the school remaining open. And that service to the community, not necessarily. The school itself, so are we focusing on the library remaining open, is that? Just been.
As I mentioned, it would be similar to that letter, but it would be in support of keeping the Rochester School open as well as the library that is within the school.
Other comments? Seeing none. Counselor Holland, do you want a final word?
Thank you, no, I think it's just really important that we lobby for this.
In terms of. The. Split the questions to distinct propositions, so the motion is to. Receive the report for information. And further direct administration to draft a letter to Aspen View Public Schools in support of keeping the Rochester School open. Using the letter of the tenth of March twenty twenty regarding the Grassland School as a model. On the first half of the motion that council received this report is information, all those in favor?
I.
Opposed? The motion is adopted nine and zero. On the second component of the motion that administration be directed to draft a letter to Aspen View Public Schools in support of the school remaining open using the letter of the tenth of March twenty twenty. Regarding Grassland as a model, all those in favor?
I.
The motion is adopted, the count is nine and zero. Calendars, eight point two. CIO, I'd like, if you wanna. Open with your comment regarding Mr. Legore.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Reeve, so as councils aware, we've been trying to schedule a. A follow up with Mr. Legore who helped council. With CIO recruitment about orientation to the new CIO, it's. Something left unfinished and was part of the contract that. Council had with Mr. Legore and Transitional Solutions, he's given a date of. He's got the morning of February thirteenth open, it conflicts with the county council meeting.
So in discussion, do you think that it would be wise to tackle it in the morning and then postpone county council to say one o'clock and. With the idea that administration would work to keep the agenda as light as possible, the. CIO and I would make sure the critical stuff is at the front of the agenda. Including any closed session items that need to come, so that if we hit a time deadline later in the day, we can adjourn and defer the rest of the February twenty ninth meeting. So I think that is, does that work for everybody, Counselor Holland?
I'm sorry, I missed the date.
The thirteenth of February.
February thirteenth.
We have council that day.
So it's regular council day, you just have the Doug Legore session in the morning and then regular council in the afternoon. And we try to keep the agenda short.
It's the proposals to book Doug Legore at nine thirty in the morning and council at one PM. Since we're already planning to be here, is there any reason to object to that? Okay. Other amendments to the calendar, starting with Counselor Gerlick and working around. Counselor Gerlick. Any amendments to the calendar? Counselor Kapitanic? Oh, your microphone, please.
The fifteenth multiplex meeting. At nine thirty at the multiplex and just to through the chair to the CEO, did we confirm that town meeting evening before the tri council?
No, I can address that, the town has feels that it's not necessary.
Okay, I'm just crossing that right off my calendar. That's all, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, I have no additions at this time.
I would strike greater north on the twenty ninth, that's been moved to the twenty sixth of February. And the, that's it for me, Counselor Wallock.
We have a farm women's meeting on the twelfth. This week. And on the February calendar, the farm women's conference is on the eighth, not the Friday. Yeah, so Thursday.
Awesome.
And. I think that's it.
Okay, Counselor Chamsik.
February twelfth, FCS S ten AM, and then on the twenty third, I have Northern Lights. Meeting.
So that's FCS S at ten AM on the twelfth of February and Northern Lights Library Meetings on the twenty third, Counselor Holland.
Thank you, nothing to report, just a. Quick request, though, when these are updated, if they could be sent out again, please, thank you so much.
Counselor Mintz.
February seventh, Alice meeting. In Westlock. Counselor Cromwell.
Thank you, I have nothing to add.
So the. Do we need to go over those again, are we okay with that and Ms. Blair has it? Is there a motion to approve the calendar as amended, Counselor Chamsik has moved the calendars be adopted as amended? Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion?
I.
Opposed? The calendars are adopted. The count is nine and zero. Next item of business is item six point one. For those of you reading ahead, you'll know why we want to talk about calendars first. Because it relates to the recommended motion. Counselor Holland. I would propose that the public hearing on this be either kicked forward to the twenty ninth in discussion with administration. To make sure we have. Good time for council in the afternoon of that day, and there's no restrictions on the public hearing time.
So you'd like it for the twenty ninth?
I would suggest we.
So if we would, if we'd like to go ahead with the recommendation that the bylaw zero one four dash twenty twenty three be given first reading. As presented and that administration plan for a public hearing for bylaws zero one four dash twenty twenty three on February twenty ninth, twenty twenty four at what time? One thirty?
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty AM, please.
That's our regular. Start time.
Sounds good.
Usually we start those late because we have to open the council meeting first. So I don't know, maybe we should start them at nine thirty five, but anyway. There's a motion put forward that council approved first reading of bylaw zero one four two zero two three. As presented, that administration plan for a public hearing of bylaw zero one four two zero two three on the twenty ninth. Of February twenty twenty four. In terms of discussion, I'd like to ask administration why we haven't switched that bylaw over to twenty twenty four numbering instead of twenty twenty three? Given that its entirety will be presented in the twenty twenty four year.
We choose a bylaw number as we're working on the file, and so administration. Assigns a number. And this file, you know, was has been worked on for a number of months prior to now.
Okay. Other discussion on the question of the moving the first reading of this? Seeing none, on the question of the adoption of first reading of zero one four two zero two three and scheduling the public hearing at nine thirty on February twenty ninth, all those in favor?
I.
The motion opposed, I guess. The motion is approved or adopted, the count is nine and zero. Page one hundred and eight in your agenda is. Okay, so we have a case where. There's a there's a standing motion to approve third reading on the table. That was moved by Counselor Kapitanic on the twelfth of December, there's been some subsequent amendments by. Legal counsel. And that occurs on page one sixteen. In your agenda under item C. The 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 last sentence in red, there is a duplication of the sentence before, and so I think it would be just in order for administration to. Yeah, delete that without really a lot of work from council. The the language on the third line is mildly different than was approved at the. Through the amendment process at our last meeting. Simplest way to. Handle that is actually to look for unanimous consent to withdraw that third reading and then to move third reading again as presented. Given that the majority of council supported the presentation that's in front of us now. And that way we kind of stay within our, so is someone willing to seek, is there unanimous consent to withdraw the third reading of the? I can't remember what the resolution number would be, but to withdraw that. Can I, is there unanimous consent on? Can I get a, can I call a question for unanimous consent on withdrawing third reading?
I.
Okay, so that is done in terms of moving third reading as presented, Counselor Kapitanic has moved third reading of the code. Conduct by law as presented in your package. Minus the duplicate sentence. Any further discussion on this item? We went round on this one a fair bit. Hey, on the question of the adoption of third reading of bylaws zero one six two zero two three, all those in favor?
I.
And opposed, there is, but the motion is adopted, the count is nine and zero. Six point three, CIO, you asked to speak to this before we start?
Um, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, there seemed to be some discussion at the previous meeting. I just wanted to interject and indicate this, when the bylaw was presented for for first reading. This was simply administration's recommendation, I had not consulted. Either through Reeve or Deputy Reeve prior to bring this ad, and it was based on convention that I've seen in other places. So. It had been noted in many places that a deputy Reed is. Generally automatically the. Chair of committee of the whole, that doesn't mean that this council has to do it. That's why I made my recommendation, very similarly to in an urban municipality, when they rotate the deputy mayor position about every six months. It's usual that the deputy mayor normally just chairs the committee of the whole, that's why we made the recommendation, and I just wanted to clarify that. It had nothing to do with consultation with the Reed and Deputy Reed ahead of time.
So administration has referred this per council direction to our. Legal. As noted in the package, they've made a couple of minor tweaks to the language. Is there someone willing to move? Second reading, Counselor Holland?
Actually, before we go ahead, I just have a question.
Sure.
Being that we also have two other council committees, budget and finance and policy review, and they each have policies that specify their vice chair and their and their chair positions and how they're done. Would it be prudent to hang on to this bylaw? Take it to Cal. Rescind. Policy review and the budget and finance policies and incorporate them in to the this procedural bylaw. So that we have everything in one, we're not running back and forth, it's all clean, we've we've. Ended messing around with this bylaw because we bring it back so many times.
I don't, I mean, maybe let the CIO answer, but I don't think. That those are conditions precedent, we can. If you want to, you know, if you want to discuss those other two committees at Cal. That's something you can do at committee of the whole. Already, it can come up there.
Right, but that would mean bringing back the bylaw again. To incorporate it into the bylaw and remove them from the policies.
CIO, thoughts? Guidance?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman through the council. We could review that with legal, whether or not it's more prudent to bring those other committees. Of council and incorporate them. In the procedural bylaw. They're not technically county council meetings, whereas a regular council meeting and a committee of the whole are council meetings. So I have not seen that in other places, so that's just basically on my convention, what I've seen. I many places actually don't have those committees anymore, as soon as they adopt a committee of the whole, they try to do away those with those committees, I think I've advised council of that. We could check with legal, I. I don't know that it really would help you in any way, but I understand what you're saying, it would be in one place. I just, I haven't seen it in other. Procedural bylaws in other municipalities that council committees are also addressed, but we could research that.
Is there anyone willing to move a motion? Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, I'll move a second reading of the bylaw zero one seven two zero two three as presented.
So there's a motion to move second reading of bylaw zero one seven two zero two three as presented, is there any discussion? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of the motion. Zero one seven two zero two three as presented, all those in favor? Opposed?
I.
Counselor Gerlick, how are you voting? Okay, so the count is seven and two, second reading is adopted. Is anyone willing to move third reading, Counselor Mins? Is there any, Counselor Mins has moved third reading of zero one seven two zero two three, is there any further discussion? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of the motion. To approve third reading of zero one seven two zero two three, all those in favor? Opposed?
I.
The count is seven and two and third reading is adopted, we are at item number seven point two, Counselor Holland, you. Wanted to speak to this, or you wanted to move a motion, I assume first?
Thank you, I see, just bear with me while I get rid of this gray box and try and find the page number, which is one forty one. All right, so the recommendation, and I just wanted to ask clarity before we put the the motion on the floor, the recommendation mentions that council approved policy sixty eight ten for naming municipal assets. In the letter that was written, it was recommended. That the Baptiste Lake Drive in the Pack Beach area be changed to Pack Beach Drive, so I'm just wondering if this recommendation. Includes that change of that name, or is that something that is separate and apart from this?
It doesn't, it's not, the change isn't in the name, in the in the recommendation, so I'd say no, but I'm going to ask Director Whaley to.
Through the chair to Counselor Holland, because you have implemented full civic addressing. The Pack Beach or Baptiste Drive are not official names, so there is no recommendation to change. Just a. Quick follow up, if I may, please, so there's there is no signage that says Baptiste Lake Drive or Pack Beach or anything like that? Through the chair to Counselor Holland, if there is, sorry, I have not been out there, if there is, it is unofficial signage and not official municipal signage.
So the guy, the person who are at the table knows the roads probably better than anybody in the room. And. I don't know if it's appropriate, but we're just going to ask to. Counselor Mins?
I'll actually cut in there and say that I don't really know. Because like. Out west, you automatically think of. Pack Beach, it's like, it's like you just turn on the road and go that way, and I've never noticed a sign there that says it.
I, I mean, I I think that I. Congratulated administration's initiative on trying to solve the problem right away. I. Wonder if it'd be appropriate to just have a more open discussion about the policy itself at committee of the whole and bump the policy over to committee of the whole for a brief discussion, but. Is Counselor Holland, are you willing to?
I'm happy with the policy, I think it's great, it's an awesome start, and as Paul, as we all know, policies can be brought back and changed and messed around with, so. I'm ready to go ahead and. Put this forward as the council approved policy sixty eight ten, the naming municipal assets, please, thank you, and well done.
The motion on the floor is that council approved policy sixty eight ten, naming of municipal assets. Counselor Holland, you moved the motion, did you want to address it at any more length before? We open the floor to other discussion?
No, I I'm happy with what the report and the and the the policy itself, and like I say, well done.
Other discussion? Counselor Cromwell? No. I, I mean, I, when I read it, I noticed, you know, a number of spelling mistakes. Certainly in terms of the Canadian English conventions, so. We should, we should fix that just as a standard we could live to. There's, I had some questions when I read it, three point three, there's an asterisk after must, I don't know if that's a like. Um, there's, uh, I had some questions when I read it, three point three, there's an asterisk after must, I don't know if that's a, like. You type like I do, or if it's a, um, references to something else, but I couldn't see another place that the asterisk should refer to. And, and before you speak, because then you can answer both at once. Um, four point one. Triple I, names must include a write-up, I actually found myself asking what does this mean? And one of the things, you know, we've talked as a council, we implement policies and we change bylaws. One of the lessons that I've taken from our, um, work so far is that once in a while, we need to step back and say, okay. If I was going to do this now, what are the steps I would take? Would I understand what I had to do to do it, and when I read this thought, okay, if I want to rename, you know, my road, Joe Gerlack Drive, uh. What would be the steps I'd need to take? So that's where, you know, what is it actually?
Uh, so, uh, to the chair, uh, my apologies, the asterisks, I. Should have taken that out, I was trying to do asterisks as requirements, uh, under the I and double I underneath that. And I can't get an asterisk as one of those options, so that was my fault. Um, and in the, uh, naming application, that would be if somebody were to submit it. Or we could develop a application form for somebody to submit a recommendation.
So does, do you feel like that sort of duplicates, um, the justification for the? I would like the name this item, road, building, whatever, this name for these reasons. Is that? How, how does I differ from triple?
Well, I, the justification being. Here is why I want to, and then here's a write-up as to why you should.
Okay.
So one is more my own thought process, and one is here's why you should think like me.
And the, the last question that I had with it, because I, so we have ten point four that. Kind of clarifies that, uh, renaming of significant municipal assets recommended by. The admin to the council for final approval. Is that something that should be under its own category, where basically just to clarify, final approving of all naming rests with council? Or is there a situation where something could be named without it running across council's desk? Because it's in, it's baked into a section right now, that's just about renaming stuff versus something that applies to the whole policy.
So to the chair, um. Currently. Athabasca County. Would not necessarily send out. Uh, request for bidders to sponsor a room per se. So as we grow and have more economic development and things like that, then that portion would be developed out. But currently, right now, because that would be a monetary inclusion, it's just included so that it couldn't grow later.
Okay. Other discussion? Seeing none, on the question of the adoption of the motion to. Approve policy sixty six ten, naming of municipal assets, all those in favor?
I.
Opposed? The count is eight and one, and the motion is adopted. Uh, seven point three, I asked for that to be on the agenda, is anyone prepared to make the recommended motion? Councillor Anderson? Thank you, so the, the, the motion is that county receive the report for information and provide, um. Sorry, that actually doesn't even work and provide direction, um. I, I asked to put that on. Uh, partially because, you know, C I B C claims that they've engaged key stakeholders. But they've not had any contact with the county. And, um, so it's disappointing that their engagement seems to be limited to sticking a note to the front door. This affects our residents, it affects people in the villages nearby, and it affects people obviously in the village of Boyle. And so while I would acknowledge, there's nothing that we could do to change their mind, I wanted to. You know, seek your thoughts on us sending them a letter expressing the disappointment about Athabasca County, that their engagement has been. Non-existent from our perspective, and their communication with us has been zero. Now, in terms of the motion, um, the motion is to receive report for information, do, do we want to amend it or do anything to add direction? Are we okay just taking it in and? Watching it disappear?
Yeah, um, my motion would include provide. Or to direct a, uh. Oh my goodness, to direct administration to send a letter expressing our concerns. Over lack of consultation with municipality. Um, it's very disappointing to see the C I B C leaving the village Boyle and the surrounding community, um. A lot, uh, I've noticed a lot of residents expressing concerns that they were very caught off guard by this and. That they're worried that the service levels that they'll receive. Will diminish, so. Although our letter probably won't have. That much of an impact on C I B C's decision, it is very disappointing to see.
Other discussion at the table? Councillor Gerlick, floor is yours, lift your mic, please.
I think very much like a school closure, it's very important to the community to not. Have to have. A loss of services because it is detrimental to the community, and we should strongly support. Uh, retention of that office as much as we can.
Is there, are you ready for the question? Question is on the adoption of the motion to, uh, receive the report for information and direct administration to send a letter. Um, expressing the concerns of the county over the closure of the branch and the lack of consultation with the county and its residents. All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? The count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. Councillor Holland, you added seven point four to the agenda, do you have a motion you'd like to make?
Thank you, yes, I would like to accept the recommendation, uh, or. Put the motion to accept the recommendation, the county council received the report for information, I just had one quick question with regards to both, um. Uh. The local assessment, uh, review board, um. Subdivision and Appeal Board, um, the tribunal, um, et cetera, will there be a dedicated, um, section on our website that? Places these, um, documents so that they are, um, accessible to the public?
I think there is.
I'm, uh, chairman, uh, through the council, I'm looking at, uh, this player, because I seem to recall seeing. Um, a section under, uh. In iCompass that might have that, um, if not, there's absolutely, that makes complete sense to include. Um, uh, agendas and the decisions. So, uh, let's look into that, we'll look into that.
Thank you very much.
Any, uh, the motion is to receive the report for information? Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, if you're ready for the question, the question is on the adoption of the motion to receive the report. Of the local assessment review board decision for information, all those in favor?
I.
Opposed, count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. Councillor Mins? Uh, we're gonna. Postpone that until after the delegation, if that seems logical to you, because unless there's something. I don't want us to be in a position of. Making a decision before we. Hey, Sarah Pulo. Turn this your delegation, is it eleven, oh my goodness? We might be done by then.
Don't worry, don't worry, that's not gonna happen. Well, I wouldn't let that happen to you on the first day back after a break.
I, I was reading the minutes one time, it said something about six thirty, I couldn't remember what was going on that day, but. Must have been. Um, is there someone? Um, so I put, uh, correspondence eight point one on the agenda. We, so we received this correspondence back from the Minister of Municipal Affairs. And as you all know, the past few years have undoubtedly been some of the most challenging in Alberta's history and. You know, as a result of events that are beyond our control, municipalities in the province have wrestled with challenges. Including the greatest public health crisis in our lifetimes, low oil and gas prices, municipalities from, you know, Cardston to high level. And Athabasca have understood the pressures facing our government, so with, you know, that kind of normal resolve, it seems like we go to R M A and we talk to our colleagues. Municipalities step up and endeavor to do the best we can with reduced provincial resources. And, uh. Unfortunately, you know, I think we're fast approaching the end of that road with our infrastructure, our services, our programs, and our communities all starting to seriously suffer. One of the hardest hits to municipal coffers came in December of twenty twenty with the repeal of the well-drung equipment tax. Which has allowed local governments to collect money from energy companies based on depth of wells drilled. And you all know that that's been something that's been close to me as a, as a, a serious, um. Thorn in my side, because the government is essentially, uh, buying. S- subsidizing industry on our backs instead of their own. While the loss of that critical revenue stream has hurt the county, uh, we understood, I think, as a council, the reasoning for that move, and it was to encourage investment. During an economic slowdown, but clearly that has turned around. So thankfully, the fortunes of Alberta are rising alongside global oil and gas prices. According to the economic dashboard, wells increased in, wells drilled increased forty six percent. In the one-year period between twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two, and I know we saw that in our county and in the area that I live and councillor Gerlick lives especially. So with production booming, profits surging, municipalities shouldn't have to shoulder the infrastructure and administrative costs. Of increased exploration development activities. The time has come for us to build strong reciprocal relationships between industry partners and the government. Municipalities have, you know, borne the brunt of the downloading of those provincial costs, and so I would propose to you that we send a letter to Minister MacIver. Expressing our extreme disappointment that the province is continuing to offer economic incentives to oil companies on the backs of rural Alberta. And rural municipalities. Councillor Mins?
Thank you, I totally agree with you, when I read that letter, that's why I, I added on eight point one eight. Uh. Was just due to the, the review. Or the, uh, there are no plans to reinstate the well. Uh, the well drilling tax and equipment tax and, and, and I was. Honestly very upset with that, because it's this complete. Utter demise to, to all of us to, to sit there. R M A, uh, has been pushing forward, as far as I know, we put in a resolution. Uh, on behalf of the county to, to get R M A on, on. Pushing or, or getting this, uh, tax back. And. To have it just thrown in our face again, saying, no, we're not doing it. I, I take that as a big slap, and, uh, I would like to. I agree with sending a letter to him with her. This. Distrust of even, like, sitting down and talking about it anymore, it's just like, no, we're not doing it. I totally disagree with. With the wording and that, so.
Thank you, so I can, uh, you have moved that we send a letter?
Yeah, I'll make that.
Further discussion? Councillor Gerlick, floor is yours?
I remember the day when I was a little boy. And they started taking oil from the tar, I was gonna say tar sands, oil sands. And their per- perspective was that if they could take it out for twenty eight dollars a barrel at, at their cost, produce oil for twenty eight dollars a barrel. Today, they're producing oil between ten and twenty dollars a barrel are their costs. And, uh, with. The. I think it's more expensive to take it out now than it would have been then, and, uh. It doesn't seem to be any justification in any way, shape or form, or any type of financial assistance, because the oil companies have never been. More liquid than they are, li- you know, liquid than they are now, and, uh. It's inexcusable, I think.
Further discussion, councillor Holland?
Um, thank you, and, and I appreciate you bringing this, uh, forward, um, and, and the words that you, um, brought forward with it. Um, I'm curious if this is something that we can also add to our list, um, for the spring R M A to sit down and have a conversation, um, with ministers.
You'd be probably as advised to have the chat with my coffee cup in the next room, but, uh. Sorry, don't.
We can only, we can only keep lobbying and advocating as best we can and, and, um.
I'm, I think certainly in terms of the list of things we talk about this, I mean. Councillor Cromwell, I acknowledge you and I'll give you the floor in one second, um. You know, for us. It, it's really not our lane to tell the government what kind of economic incentives to offer industry, the, the. Challenge that I keep coming back to is, they're doing it on our back and with our wallet, and. You know, I have always said I would buy lunch every day for Lexi if I could have Joe's wallet. You know, like, it doesn't work, if you want to provide an incentive, and historically, our L G F F or M S I. Per capita has decreased over the last many years. Um, effectively, our grant funding through, um. Step decreases because the pool isn't growing, but the, the costs are growing, so. Your inflationary pressure is eroding the purchasing power of what can be done through those grant programs. And, you know, we can't. The, the, the province is flush with cash and, and they can't keep, uh, starving us when they keep downloading costs, you know, we've had. What if it's almost eight hundred thousand dollars a year in, in our C M P costs now? It's a, it just. Where do they, when do they get their hand out of our pocket? Councillor Cromwell, I promised you the floor, it's yours.
Thank you, just a, uh, bit of information, there is a proposed well site right now, uh, to be drilled northwest of Wandering River. Uh, some of my residents were. Given notice that they would be horizontal drilling under their land to get to it. Uh, in accordance with A E R regulations, and a lot of upset about that, I was gonna be bringing that to. Your attention here today. Uh, so I'm very much in support of this letter and very unhappy the way the government is doing things.
Other comments? Seeing none, if you're ready for the question, the question is on the adoption of the motion to send a letter. To, uh, the minister expressing our disappointment that the province is continuing to offer. Economic incentives to oil companies on the backs of rural Albertans and rural municipalities. Um, councillor Mins, would you find it reasonable to have the carbon copied to R M A members?
Yep, R M A members, uh. Even, uh, even Emily Van Deiken. Um, that'd be a good one.
And our elected members.
Yeah, yeah. Like Brian Jean, yeah.
Which would be Jean and Van Deiken.
Yeah, you mentioned.
But, sorry, Ms. Blair, the. Minister Jean, Emily Van Deiken. Um, and our R M A members. Councillor Mins? Councillor Holland, you want to speak before we?
Just a quick question, and it's probably no, but I'm going to ask it anyway, is there any kind of a tax subclass? That we can look at for these particular lands that, that the drilling is on, that we can?
I think that's outside of our, um, lane.
Massage, just checking.
Yeah, because otherwise some clever municipalities would have come up with it, but, uh. The C I O can address that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman through the council, um, it's simply, uh, right now, it's simply, uh, part of the non-residential classification system that. Council has already, prior to my arrival, has already discussed. Um, some changes to that, uh, a phased in increase to that, that would affect this as well.
And I think the, you know, the way you get at it is sometimes maybe through role use agreements or other stuff, but probably it's a discussion that's worth having at a workshop, strategic planning session. On the question of the adoption of the mo- motion to send a letter to, uh, the minister and, uh, carbon copy and R M A members and our elected representatives. At the province, all those in favor?
I.
Opposed, the motion is adopted, the count is nine and zero. Eight point one B. Councillor Holland, you know, the question you wanted to ask regarding, do you want to move a motion to accept these and then?
Well, I'm not quite ready to move the motion, no, I, I'm concerned, and, and I have a question and looking for clarity. Um, being that this is an intermunicipal, um, S E A B board, and we have two of our municipalities that are on this, uh. Involved with this have already. Asked motions on who to appoint, where does that leave us?
Um, this was a discussion that occurred in closed session last time, and I think that if you want to engage it, we should either. Enter closed session or. Um, maybe defer this to be something that we can handle in closed session.
Absolutely, I would like to, um, defer that for closed session, please.
So councillor Holland has moved that we, uh, defer eight point one B to be covered once we're in closed session? Uh, eight point one B, just once we, once. Um, it's the same one as last time, the intermunicipal relations. Uh, motion to defer is non-debatable, all those in favor?
I.
Opposed, seeing none, the motion is, or the, uh. The item is deferred till we've entered a closed session portion of the meeting. We've already addressed eight point two. Um, it's nine point one, sorry, Ms. Blair, can you you pass those out and is it possible to have uh, did you let McKen? So Councilor Cromwell has a copy? I have a copy. So um the summary on this is it's a request from the Crooked Creek Conservatory. Uh, this is nine point one is a request from the Crooked Creek Conservatory to um to provide a letter of support uh in in their seeking of a grant to um promote the community energy improvement program in the region. The timelines are uh they need a response by January twentieth, so it it just missed the the way it came in and timing missed the the cutoff and the um timing the meeting, Councilor Wallack.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the writing of a letter of support for the Crooked Creek Conservatory.
Uh, Councilor Wallack has made a motion that the county uh approve the writing of a letter of support for the Crooked Creek Conservatory on this subject, any further discussion? Or time to read it? Um, Ms. Blair, I I print, I had uh extra copy printed in case you wanted to leave on with uh the advocate. Uh, Councilor Holland.
Thank you, just uh for clarity, as I'm quickly trying to read through this.
Yeah.
Um, it mentions we have the verbal support from the town with the letter pending, but we don't need a letter from AC yet, which is us. The EOI simply asks if there are partners slash supporters and who are who they are. Are we partners or are we supporters?
Supporters, I think.
Thank you. Just wanted that for clarity, thank you.
And if we do the letter of support, it clears it off our table, we don't have to do some kind of verbal thing. Any further discussion? Seeing no hands go up on the question of the adoption of the motion to provide a letter of support to the Crooked Creek Conservatory Society of Athabasca for uh their grant application, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. All right, it's uh we, it's time for coffee break, why don't we? Our delegation comes at eleven, so we've got uh if we take a seven-minute coffee break, that's uh we've got half an hour to work through the first few closed session items, so in advance of the coffee break, uh is someone willing to move we into closed session? Councilor Kapitani has moved, we go to a closed session to begin addressing eleven point one, all those in favor?
Aye.
Councilor Gerlick. Get half past ten and we'll recess and. I'd like to reconvene the uh January ninth County Council meeting. It is eleven AM and we have, we're at item number four point one, we have a delegation here uh regarding grading and brushing, it's Dr. Kurt Deitcher. Welcome, thank you for joining us and coming. Um, our practice is uh typically, so delegations are a chance for information to come into council. And then later in the agenda, we discuss the items that have been heard. We normally start with introductions and then when the cycle comes around to you, um the floor becomes yours and you can take over. On the screen behind me and you, we have Councilor Cromwell, who's joining us via Zoom up in Wandering River. Uh, we have CIO Beck, uh Recording Secretary Ms. Blair, Communications uh Tammy, his last name is longer than I can remember. Apologies. Uh, Councilman Minz, floor is yours.
Uh, good morning, uh Rob Minz, Division Eight, Baptiste Lake Island, Gary.
Good morning and welcome. Thank you for being here on Tracy Holland, Division Five, which is east of Athabasca to Amber Valley Parkview um east.
Hello, Chams at Grassland Area, Atmore and uh Crossfeather.
Good morning, uh Camille Wallack, Division Nine, North of the River.
And we know each other, Brian Hall, Division Four.
Good morning, Ashton Anderson, I reside in Division Three, which is in the Boyle area.
Good morning, Natasha Kapitani, Division Two, Collington, New Pine Creek and Menook.
Morning, Joe Gerlock, Rochester Perry Vale Area, Division One, you've been a pain in my neck for a lot of years. Or looked after the pain in my neck, party. Good morning, folks.
The fourth.
We don't need long, I just want to met bring up the, want you guys to discuss your logic behind stopping summer grading when you still continue winter grading in in driveways. Um, not every um driveway needs summer grading, but ours is on a hill and it it's about a thousand dollars to get a grader out there. That's the only draw, only thing for the job. When the grader guy goes by and I know them, they can come in in about seven minutes and do the job. And I'm happy to pay and I'm happy to sign the waiver, and I'm not sure what the logic was. So you guys can discuss really how important it was to cut it and how much you're saving versus how much you're making. Because when they do summer grading, I imagine they would if you charge even two hundred dollars for a summer grading job and it takes five minutes, that's got to pay the bills, it's got to be reasonable. So just, that's one thing. The second thing is that there's road allowances all over the place that have been cleared because that's what the county's policy always has been. Is to clear road allowances, and I can see the benefit, but anybody driving from Clyde to Edmonton along that strip where there's no trees, that's a kind of a treacherous area. And it's drier, and if you want to affect your climate, cut all your trees down. I always laugh at the Hutterites and that they cut all their trees down, they drain all their potholes and then they pray for rain. Because trees create a climate that you can do something about. And this whole world right now is growing trees. I'm not a climate change activist, but when I see a a half mile of road lounge trees cut down and there's a dozen songbird nests that are eliminated, those songbirds don't have a place to nest anymore. There's a lot of things about that. So in my mind, if you guys were to think, rethink, because you're going to be told to rethink it one day, don't cut down your trees, plant them. Do something about it. So I'm thinking that if you have a an intersection that has a north and a south side, east and a west side of the of the road allowance, if you're gonna do greater or or clearing, just do the clearing on the sun side. Like, say the south side or the east side and let the sun look after that, but leave some of the trees on the other side, because if you don't do it, somebody's gonna tell you to do it one day. Because clearing out the trees, just clearing it as a policy is probably got to be rethought. I'm not saying you should, but I'm thinking you should. Just think about it as a as a uh something as a proactive thing in the climate agenda. That's all. Any questions for me?
That's the next stage, yeah. Does council have any questions for for uh regarding the presentation? I I can say that's probably the shortest delegation uh we've ever had, Kurt. And and I appreciate that you, you know, come in with some things that you notice that are happening and take a minute to to come and wait and and talk to us about things uh you think are important to address and reconsider. Um, are there any questions around the table? Councilor Holland, I can always count on you for one.
Not not so much as a question, but just more of a comment and and I appreciate you coming forward with, you know, your concerns because um as you mentioned, shelter belts are becoming more and more frequent um and important in in our community. What do you recommend or do you have any recommendations um with regards to how to handle the road allowances when the brushing in the trees and whatnot start impacting the roads, um the ability for the roads to dry out and those kinds of things? Do you have a recommendation there that you might want to bring forward? Because I think we're we're looking both at private land a little bit um as well as in in the road allowance, so just curious what you would, what you would bring forward as a solution.
Sure, visualize a uh road allowance that is east and west. It's got trees on both sides. That's messy because it gets wet. So as a compromise, clear out all the south side trees, leave the north side as a windbreak, because a lot of the wind is from the northwest. So you got a windbreak, you've cleared out some of the sun can get at the road, you've compromised. Clearing them both out exposes you to wind and drifting and um and environmentally, it's it's ugly. I grew up shooting rabbits and partridges in the road allowances and they don't exist anymore. It's kind of like, hmm, it's kind of sad. So it's compromised somewhere. Or one day you're going to be forced to build shelter belts thirty meters from the road or something like that. Because you're going to have to, because if you have to plant trees as part of a county uh position one day, what are you, where are you going to plant the trees? It'll have to be on private land thirty meters from the center line. That sort of thing is going to happen to whether you like it or not down the road, so probably some kind of compromise will be reasonable down the road.
Thank you, yes, and and I appreciate that because I I'm a lover of those trees too. I really like driving down the the tree laneways, but understand the the ups and the downs, so thank you.
You're welcome. I think you overstayed my welcome already. You know, and I, you know, your comments around drought and moisture retention and all of those things certainly are are relevant and you know, the the council, it's important for us, and I think uh I can say our our group has hasn't just blindly accepted what we've always done. There's been a lot of questioning, why are we still doing this? Why are we doing it this way? That doesn't mean it always gets changed, but it it certainly has been open to that. And uh you know, and looking at the strategic kind of high-level strategic plan that was released a year ago, um you know, protecting natural environment, watershed and agricultural community is uh is one of the, one of the top goals of that that document, and so there's, I think, potentially alignment in what you're saying and um you know, you might even be interested to read that document.
I would be.
I'm not sure how many people have picked it off.
I've got a a thought that came, is anybody familiar with how this county developed in the seventies?
Some of us were born.
This this county, this county was largely swamp and willow trees, and you could shoot two moose north of the river starting September first without a draw. There's that many moose. And the the province got together and they gave a grant to the county and they ditched the whole county. There's ditches everywhere. And that drained all the water. And then the farmers cleared the willows and they have farmland, that's great, except you do change your climate. And now we've got those ditches coming back in again, and farmers are going to start complaining about flooding. And who cleans the ditches? Yeah. So I mean, I think the trees were a good thing, but it's a kind of a balancing act, of course.
Balance is critical, uh Councilman Minz.
Yeah, I I just want to thank you for coming in with with the idea of of brushing itself because uh I'm a real advocate on brushing road allowances.
Hmm.
And uh when the county was brushing before, it was always looked at on the south sides of of the east-west road allowance and on the west side of the north-south road allowance for sure to try to get those trees back due to the fact of maintaining roads and 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 also if the road allowance was looked at the other side for for brushing, it was probably due to uh better maintenance of the ditch and not for drainage and not for off the roadways.
Not the farmer complaining about nothing growing on the north side of the trees.
That could be a little bit of a issue, but uh but we always looked at it that way to to uh uh brush like the south sides and the and the west side of road allowances and get the sun and and the wind and and that into the roadways, make it better for maintenance and that and and my council partners around here can honestly say that I've always pushed that for the last couple of years in here to to maintain that program. We also have a Alice program that that goes through uh through the three counties, uh Athabasca, Barhead and Westlock that have have a uh tree planting uh programs with them that we we like to see the the uh landowners jump on that too, if they can, to uh to put in shelter belts and stuff like that, where these programs will pay half, half the money to do it. And that, so so there is programs out there already to to do this, but brushing our own longer road allowance is a very necessity to maintaining roads, that's the biggest thing, so.
So it's probably a compromise anyway, yeah. Thank you for uh making time.
Sure.
To talk to us this morning, and I know, again, this does come up later in the agenda, and I think there's some uh likely with a lot of the delegations, what will happen is we may talk briefly about them in the same meeting and then refer to administration to come back with some other.
Sure.
Other information.
I'll wait till you get back me, no big deal. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for coming.
Sure, thank you.
Coming out of closed um well, let's uh let's just move right on to seven point five, given that they timely and top of mind, that's page one sixty-two of your agenda. There is an administration from, there is, sorry, there is a recommendation from administration. Councilman Minz, you added this to the agenda, did you want to make a motion and speak to it first?
Uh, I can speak to it first. The reason I added it on is because all of a sudden it's like uh to gather or to receive the de- uh delegation as information and director administration to gather further information on the topics as discussed and bring it to the January thirtieth, twenty twenty-four regular council meeting. What what's the information? What 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 are we looking here for? That's why I brought this up, because I thought that this motion was like this, to me is I would uh, I'd like to make a motion to receive the delegation as information.
Councilman Minz has moved that we receive this for information. Yeah, other discussion, is there anything else that needs to come up from from that, Ron? You have the floor first and then Councilor Holland.
You're good?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Councilor Holland.
Um, I was just curious, like, as as he mentioned, compromise, um instead of taking out the complete road allowance, you know, flatten it, uh I'm still missing a lot of those old bams in in an area that I really enjoyed going down. Um, is there a way um that we can look at compromise, whether it be, you know, some uh trimming?
Try to steer us back to the they want to be careful we don't get down a rabbit hole of getting into other process, I don't know, policy and procedure.
I just have a question. I mean, it's it it's it's relevant, so I'm just curious is if there is a a other methods that other communities or other couns- counties are using that may not completely remove everything, might takes, you know, a mulcher down and, you know, trim a whole side down instead of, you know, because some of those trees, they suck a lot of moisture out of the roads too, so I'm just curious, they do.
That's a bit, that's a lot.
We not know how the roots work. They do, and I've seen it, I miss my bams.
Director Whaley.
Through the chair to uh Councilor Holland, there's always new and innovative methods coming out. We do try not to take everything, uh it is primarily done for sightlines and for drainage uh in the case of taking more than some people want, it is generally always the case of sightlines um specifically around intersections, but I mean, we do generally try not to completely decimate uh unless it's at the request of a landowner, in which case then we're working with them and uh that would be a separate issue, but we can always let you know of any new and innovative products that are coming out if you would like.
That would be awesome, thank you.
So there are, Councilor Gerlick, floor is yours.
I was just gonna say it's unfortunate that your power lines go down the north side and the west side of the of the road, which often is one of the reasons why why the trees have to go, because the power lines are there and you don't want the trees falling on the power lines and whatever. Uh, and secondly, I think it's worthy of discussion to, once again, just touch on the idea of of uh grading that he was referring to, that I don't see where uh because because at once upon a time, one of the uh one of the priorities of this council was to provide services. And uh we seem to be majoring in the removal of services. Uh, so I I just think it would be worthy of a of a discussion, even if things stayed away status quo, at least it had the discussion.
What's your challenge, floor is yours?
Um, I guess um as there, since we have removed that uh program, has administration had any feedback from the summer grading program?
Councilor Gerlick, can I get you to focus on, so we have one speaker at a time, because I can't hear both.
Yeah.
Sorry, Counselor Chams.
Through the chair to Counselor Chamsak, I have had no complaints since August the twenty first. When I started, before that, I don't know if we have, but I can check and get back to you.
Wonderful, thank you.
So the motion is to receive the report for information, Counselor Gerlick has not amended it or but has suggested he would be interested in discussion. Opening a further discussion around. The summer grading program, I wonder maybe that's more appropriate to take to committee the whole through a request for decision and. So we leave that, park that there if you are motivated to do it. Any further discussion on the delegation that came to us? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of the motion to receive the delegation report is information, all is in favor. Opposed. Counselor Cromwell, how are you voting? So we need to record him as being out of the meeting. Count is eight and zero, and the motion is adopted. We had a couple of things coming out of closed session and then a couple more to go back in for. But Counsel Counselor Holland had indicated that item eight point one B, she was prepared. To make a motion to receive the correspondence for information, that motion is on the floor, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, if you're ready for the question on the adoption of the motion to receive the correspondence for information, all those in favor. Opposed, Counselor Cromwell, how are you voting?
Sorry, I.
So the count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. Eleven point one. Counselor Wallack, do you want to read the motion?
Like recommend the council appoints the following members at large to the ARED committee, Jamie Gaberson. Bonnie Raven, Frederick Melvick and Catherine Minville, sorry, and Catherine Swindlehurst. To.
Counselor Wallack has moved that the following appointments be made for members of large, they read committee as Jamie Gaberson, three years, Bonnie Raven, three years, Frederick Minville, one year. And Catherine Swindlehurst, two year term. As recommended by administration and the ARED committee, is there any further discussion on that recommendation? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of the motion to appoint those members of large, all is in favor.
I.
Opposed. How does nine and zero and the motion is adopted? The next item was eleven point two, Counselor Minz, do you remember it? Counselor Minz has moved that the report on the tendering of gravel purchases crushing hauling be received for information, any further discussion? Seeing none on the adoption of that motion, all is in favor.
I.
Opposed, count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. It is. The next item of business on our agenda is eleven point four, it'd be in order to receive a motion to go into closed session, Counselor Cromwell has moved. All those in favor? The count is. In a vote to Counselor Cromwell.
I, sorry.
Nine and zero and the motion is adopted. We're enclosed, you got to go. Alright, Counselor Gerlock has moved that we leave closed session on the motion, is there any discussion? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of the motion to leave closed session, all those in favor.
I.
The motion, any opposed, the motion is adopted, nine and zero. The first item coming out of closed section, we have eleven point four, Counselor Anderson.
Move to direct administration to add the following topics to the upcoming tri council meeting agenda. Helipad, STAB appointment process and regional recreation master plan.
Counselor Anderson has moved that we direct administration to add the following to the next tri council agenda. Helipad, STAB appointments and regional recreation master plan, is there any further discussion on that item? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of that motion, all is in favor.
I.
Opposed, the motion is adopted, nine and zero. Regarding eleven point five advice from officials. Counselor Wallack had, let me read it, had made a motion to direct administration to amend the policies as discussed. Enclosed and. And. Present back to council at the next council meeting. Is there any further discussion on that item? On the question of the adoption of that motion, all those in favor.
I.
Opposed, there is the. Count of nine and zero and the motion is adopted. On the third item, advice from officials. Counselor Anderson. I didn't write it down.
Move to acknowledge a successful completion of the CIO probationary period and direct the rave to follow up with a letter regarding the performance review.
Counselor Anderson has moved that council acknowledges a successful completion of the probationary period for the CIO and directs the rave to follow up. With a letter, something like that. Any further discussion? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of that motion, all those in favor.
I.
Opposed, the count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. We are adjourned at fifteen minutes past three.